So I'd like to open the special meeting at 3.06pm. Thank you for your attendance, councillors. And we do have councillor O'Neill online, I believe.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to... Sure.
I'll move in accordance with...
We might just change the order of business if that's okay.
Oh, okay, we'll move, I'll move, we change the order of business to commence with confidential items C1, C2 and C3.
Okay, we have councillor Burkitt seconds that. Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? Go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move it. In accordance with provision of section 254j3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, a local government may resolve to close a meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that its councillors or members consider necessary to close the meeting. I haven't got the rest of that. Just have, wait for the minutes.
Just in the, in the pink one?
He's, he's read all of that but he hasn't...
I've read that, I haven't got the other piece.
Can I just say, see one?
No, there's another bit in between them.
There's a bit more.
There's another piece we've got to read out. There's another line that's not in there.
It'd have been the minutes of something we'd put.
We've got every faith in Emma.
Some of it is technology.
Yeah, that's right, technology.
Minutes from the...
Might have...
I'm just trying to find, for you, councillor.
I might have a set of minutes here.
We'll just adjourn for a minute while we get these technical difficulties sorted out. Okay, we'll keep going, we've sorted the technical difficulties.
Pardon, Mr Mayor, in accordance with the provisions of section 254j3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, a local government may resolve to close a meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that its councillors or members consider it necessary to close the meeting. The matters to be discussed, in accordance with section 254j5 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, the following table provides the matters to be discussed and an overview of what is to be discussed with the meeting as clo, while the meeting is closed. C1, engagement of procurement agencies' classifications. C2, presentation of quarterly report to council, priorities for chief executive officer. C3, carbon farming study classification.
Move. Okay, do we have a seconda? Councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Back in open. I have previously declared a conflict on C2, so I don't need to declare it again, as far as I understand. And I too have a conflict on item C2, C2, as previously declared when, last week, when we laid it on the, before we laid it on the table.
So now we have to get some other chair?
So they have to leave the room? The councillors with the conflict, to leave the room.
Shall we leave the room? And you've got back into clothes on your own?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So do we have to have someone to chair this?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'll all nominate Wendy Taylor.
I decline. So I'll nominate Joe Hancock.
All right. I'll second that.
So Julie, would you please just call for the...
Sorry, I need to go.
No, Rob's, yeah.
This is your, you're going to be here for this?
Yeah, but I...
Someone's got to call nomination, shouldn't you?
So could Sharon just call the motion? Okay, go, get Rob, yeah.
No, Rob did it last time.
Rob, Rob's been through this with this many times. Rob's been through it.
What do you think, carbon farmer was on, Rob?
No.
So we, we need a chair.
So we're going to still have a special meeting, aren't we?
Yes, and open.
We're in open?
Well, just to give you a run, I nominated Wendy, probably thinking Julie was going to be chairing. And she declined, she nominated Joe. George seconded.
Okay, so councillors, as I was understanding it there, would obviously be seeking the chair, been nominated by, moved by councillor Burkitt, that councillor, and seconded...
No, no, I, I nominated Wendy, Wendy declined, councillor Taylor, sorry.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor nominated councillor Hancock.
Yes.
Councillor Edwards seconded. That's where we're at.
Okay. We've heard the motion in a roundabout way, councillors, are those in favour? Please signify.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, yeah, and then there's none against. Just for you, councillor O'Neill, there's no, none against. So it's passed.
Yeah, thanks Robbie, I can say everyone.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Did you put your hand up, councillor Neil?
He said he did say...
So did we, did we record that in the minutes?
It's on, so you're still on, you're still in open?
Okay.
So you're still in open, councillor Neil?
So I'd just like to call for, to go into close, would someone like to move to go into closed session?
Read that, I have to read that.
Yes, please. And just for C2.
In accordance, in accordance with the provisions of section 254j3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, a local, a local government may resolve to close the meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that, that its councillors or members consider necessary to close the meeting. The item number...
Just that second line there, councillor Edwards?
Okay, in accordance with section, that one?
Yes.
In accordance with section 254j5 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, the following table provides, item number?
The matters to be discussed.
Oh, the matters to be discussed.
And...
The two dot points, councillor.
Oh, yeah. And an overview of what is to be discussed while the meeting is closed.
Which is?
Which, which is C, the local government budget.
No, no, sorry, C2, on your agenda page.
Oh, yes, C2, oh, yeah, provision of quarterly report.
Presentation.
Priorities for chief executive officer.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yep. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Edwards, all those in favour? Yep.
Yes.
All those against?
Yes.
Seven, zero, thanks. Okay, C2, presentation of quarterly report to council, priorities of chief executive officer. Do I have a mover? Councillor Burkitt.
I'd like to move a councillor receiving note, the officer's report as presented.
Do I have a seconda? Councillor Taylor, all those in favour?
Yes.
All those against? Carried seven, zero. And I'll hand back over to the, I might, we'll just adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we'll keep going. Item 5.1, notice or of repeal or amendment of resolution. Okay, got any questions or do we have a mover? It is in open, so, CEO, do we need to write it or read it all out or it is in open so we could, everyone could see it?
Good choice, Mr Mayor.
So we just need to, what did you say, councillor Hancock?
Yeah, just rescind that motion number?
No. I don't agree with it, so I'm not going to move it.
B, it's only one number that's changing. Wait, what?
Okay, well, I'll move that, I'll move that. So this is item 5.1, proposal to amend the resolution. It's in open, so everyone can see that. So I won't go through all of that, but I will read the recommendation which I'm moving, that council amend resolution number OM/03.2021/69 to read as follows. That council, one, adopt the detailed organisational structure as presented by the mayor and tabled at a meeting 24th of March 2021 to commence full operation by, and we're crossing that out and making it now 5th of October 2021. Two, council...
Well, as listed.
Yes, as listed.
As, as listed, okay.
I think councillor Brooke Baragey, it's worth noting that there has been subsequent updates since the 24th of March and it would be inclusive of those.
Do we need to put that extra in or...?
Inclusive of updates since the, it's what's been changing at us at that date. It's the original motion that's changing the actual date. We might just put a narrative for the community to put a note to say that there has been subsequent updates since that. We'll, we'll just do it, Mr Mayor, if it's okay, in the executive summary?
Do we have a, so that's, I didn't read them all, but it's actually from one to... Hey. Do we have a seconda? Councillor Edwards, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak?
Yes, I'm again.
I certainly believe, there certainly has not been the ability, as it seems to have these done, so I do believe we need to shift the month ahead for this start. Does anyone want to speak against the motion? Okay, well, no one wishes to speak against, does anyone wish to speak for? Then no one wishes to speak, we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour? All those against?
Against.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I mucked it up.
Do vote for it.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to.
Righto, let's do it again. All those in favour?
Mr Mayor hadn't called it, he hadn't called the motion.
No, I haven't called it.
He hadn't called it.
Well, you said all those in favour?
Yeah, I did, but, but I think the councillor's confused, so we'll just do it again. All those in favour? All those against?
Against.
Six, three, if I can call for a division. C1, engagement of recruitment agencies. Councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that council authorise the chief executive officer to engage with pre-recruitment to ask the questions about flexibility of employment directly or via them, be available to the local, for the locals of, of three to six months. The returns, if not working out, would they be open to sending through their identified applicants for each of the positions and their individual costs to start on the 5th of October 2021?
So councillor, can I confirm that you've seen the, the alternative resolution that came around? Just making sure that you've seen and read that.
So we've just got to get this wording right?
I just want to make sure that you've seen it.
Yeah, I've seen that, you have to type that up, so we typed that up.
As in that, you want that?
Uh, no.
No.
No, what councillor McMullin said.
Authorise the CEO to engage with pre-recruitment.
Yeah, I don't think I'll keep that.
Righto, we'll just do it in bits.
I need to slide down, councillor McMullin.
Authorise the chief executive officer?
Yep.
To engage with pre-recruitment?
CEO delegate, do you mind?
Okay, CEO delegate, that's fine.
Or delegate?
To ask the following questions, they're listed in that previous. If you flick back to your email 419, that's what I read out, Emma, that.
So from two provide? No, no, they're talking two different emails then, so...
Twenty past four.
Four nine, well, yeah, four nine eight.
That's what...
You want me to, I'll read it slowly then, I thought, I thought it'd be easy if you had a, you sent it.
Yeah, that, that, just bear in mind, this email is in a different context.
All right, okay.
So two, so did, did you have a look at the 619 one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To engage with pre-recruitment? Just copy the first one.
Okay, well, I, I see what you're saying, I can change the 616 one, I suppose, it'd be easier, wouldn't it?
Hey?
Yeah, the 619 one would be easier.
Six nine?
Six sixteen one.
Well, yeah, that's all right, well, I'll, count? George, three minutes later than mine, did you? Now, you want me to read again? That the council authorised the chief executive officer to engage with pre-recruitment to provide recruit, recruitment services as required to assist with this temporary three to six month appointment of the vacant executive positions by 5th of October, based on the latest adopted organisation structure.
Just missed out chief executive or delegate. Councillor McMullin just...
Oh, sorry, it's not in, it's put the delegate in, yeah, that's right, that's fine.
You didn't say the three of them.
I didn't want the three of them, that's why I changed it. Is that, is that the, is that the proper name, procurement?
Pre-recruitment.
It's pre-recruitment, is it, two words?
Pre-recruitment.
Mr Mayor, just with that one, would council consider like second part to it there, because, like, we're up to six. If you can go to them, they can say, okay, we've got five, but we don't have an engineer. If you wanted to go somewhere else, you'd have to come back, you'd have to come back and rescind this motion to try and do it, because it does lock you into one. If you had a second part saying, you know, and if unable to do that, then look to the panel for the balance. Yeah, I was just saying councillors there, that, because you're locking into six. And if, so these guys can say, well, look, we've got five, but we don't have an engineer as such, and you wanted to go to, okay, we've got five of those six, that's good, but we wanted to go to someone else, you're going to have to come back and rescind the motion, because you've locked into all six here. So is there wording you can use, like, part two to say, and if unable to do all six, the flexibility to go back to the panel? I just, conscious if you can't get all six, you're going to have to come back and rescind this motion, because it's locked you into six, so maybe part...
And you're also locking into applicants that are registered with that one?
It doesn't say six though, we just say appointment of...
Sorry, C, I, I can't hear your response.
Sorry, councillor O'Neill. There, there might be other people who are registered with other providers as well, so we're sort of ruling, we're narrowing the pool, I would have thought.
You, you might get six, they might have all six. We're just saying if you don't, you might have to come back and rescind your motion, because it says that we're doing all the vacant positions through the one thing, that was all but...
So through your chair, director role?
Yep.
Um, so you're saying we can add in, if we can't, if these people can't get the six, we go back to...
To council consideration, just saying, if you, you know, you've said you're going to go to pre-recruitment to try and fill them, I'm just saying if you don't have, just give yourself the flexibility. If you're unable to fill all six, then give yourself the flexibility then, then to maybe look at others.
Also, just as well, if they can't get in the allotted time, we don't want to be left till the last week to have to look for someone else.
I'll just give you an example, councillor, obviously we had another matter previously where I locked in on a single supplier, there was an issue identified at the time with a conflict of interest. I had to pull a full rescission on it and...
With five clear days?
From a governance perspective, you'll lose five clear days, you'll then have to come back to a, either a special or an ordinary meeting. There's a very high risk that you could lose a week to a week and a half if, say, pre-recruitment can't fill the lot. But that, it's just experience I have with this other matter.
I agree.
I just sort of said, it's so, it's, you're locking, it's so tight that if, if, if this doesn't quite, everything doesn't quite work, we, we, we're forced to come back to rescind it.
Okay, well, I was saying, we were... Can you answer it?
We have the option to explore other providers.
No, no, I'm not, that's, I'm not, I'm, this is my motion, I'm not putting that in there.
I'm, I'm happy to move what's there.
I can change it a little bit so that it doesn't have to come back for rescission.
Need a safety net.
Just a safety net, that's all, so...
You've already got someone that's moved the resolution?
Yeah, I'm happy to second it, I'm sorry.
Councillor McMullin was just having a think whether there was any other words, so he was happy to include. But, yeah, you're not councillor McMullin?
Well, it's just been advised that I've moved it, so...
No, no, we're still going.
Hasn't been seconded.
Now, with all due respect, deputy mayor, the mayor had indicated he was willing to move it. I just reminded the meeting that someone had already moved a resolution.
When was that?
Yeah, and I just, I just...
In the last thirty seconds.
Thank you councillor O'Neill, I clarified.
I moved it first, councillor O'Neill.
That's what he said, that's what he was telling the mayor.
That's what I've confirmed, deputy mayor.
You've already moved it.
No, I've moved it, yes.
I just, just actually clarified, I meant seconded and not moved it. Thank you councillor O'Neill. The, so we have a mover and a seconda. Are you happy with the motion?
Yeah, I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Righto.
Is there any opposition?
You didn't, you seconded it.
I've seconded it.
Just from my record.
Is there any opposition?
Yes.
Yes, I oppose.
Do we have anyone wish to speak to the motion?
I, I'd just like to speak. I seriously think, deputy mayor, that we need to have a, I agree with what you're saying, but a safety net. If, if we go down the track and they can't fulfil those six roles and we're left with a week up our sleeve, we're going to be putting back the date again. So we, we need, before we, before we move it, to have some way of having that, a process in place, whether it's after two weeks or whatever, otherwise we're going to be back to square ones.
Unless we call a special meeting if we...
That's what we need, another special meeting.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Yep.
Please go ahead, councillor Hancock.
I, I won't be supporting this motion, because I actually believe that strategic direction of council is policy setting, and these positions descriptions is not policy setting. And recruiting is definitely not a councillor's job. I believe that even selecting a recruitment agency is not a councillor's job and that it is actually operational and it is the CEO's job. So once again, I, I won't be supporting this, because I actually believe that we are stepping outside our boundaries, actually even considering to hire a recruitment agency. And it is disappointing to see, once again, that this council is willing to look at a resolution that's actually not based on clear cost. We do not know the clear cost that this will be for council, once again. And, and so therefore, I, I actually want to be having no part of selecting recruitment agencies for these, these positions of directors. I firmly believe that that is the CEO's job.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, I'll speak against.
Please go ahead.
I oppose this motion on, on, on two bases. The first is, I, I don't believe it is our responsibility to recruit the second tier of, of our council. We had this discussion yesterday, I, I framed my debate at the same. Our role as councillors is strategic. The only staff member that we have the responsibility under the Local Government Act of Employing is the CEO. I, I've seen the resolution that has been alluded to, that was circulated to councillors. Now, it is a councillor's right to move whatever they like. In saying that, in the fulsome, fulsome of time, I'm sure will understand why this particular resolution has been moved on a proposal where there aren't proper costings, that we don't know the financial impact of the decision. And so that is my first argument, we don't employ staff below the CEO and this is going to the heart of employing staff. Second to that, we've got a, a resolution that is approving the, the, a, a decision to engage one particular firm without proper costings, without a opportunity to do proper due diligence on the proposals that have been presented. And on that basis, this is just poor, poor governance and I cannot support it and I won't support it and I'll be voting against the resolution.
Okay, does someone, anyone else wish to speak?
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, could I just make one point of clarification? That, and I think we need to specify this, that this excludes the salary benchmarking process, because that, that has already been engaged.
Yep. To the mover, we have...
This is for, and sorry, this is the temporary staff as well, with no commitment to the permanent employees at this time.
What was that, sorry, I didn't quote.
So this is for the temporary staff, for three to six months and there's no resolution at the moment for how we go about the...
and there's no resolution at the moment for how we go about the permanent incumbents for the role.
No, that's correct.
That'll be, I'm just wanting to make sure that that's council's intention, that that will be considered at a later time in the future.
And also, to the mover, should it not be engaged on with local buy? By the panel?
Haven't we just gone through a debate? I didn't, I thought once you spoke for and against and then some up that you got to go to.
Change the motion at any time.
Yeah, I just did want to clarify though, that another agency has been engaged for that component already, so I just didn't want to get it confused with this motion.
Because the permanent side.
But CEO, because we're obviously looking at local buy, should it say local buy in the resolution?
By a local buy arrangement.
Yeah, is the mover happy to put in there via local buy arrangement?
Well, yeah, sure, yeah, I don't have a problem with that local buy.
Well, that's the only way, yeah, you can do it.
So now we're changing the resolution that we've just debated.
It's more clarity.
More, more clarity, but happy if you'd like to debate further, councillor Hancock? Is the mover happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy, yeah.
I'm happy as a seconder, does anyone wish to have a further debate since the motion has been clarified? Okay, then we'll go to the vote, all those in favour? All those against?
Against.
Six three, if I can call for a division.
Three?
Six three.
Sorry, I wasn't sure, councillor Burkett.
No, it just took a long time to put me down.
No, there was a, I noticed there was six three. Okay, now what's next?
C three.
C three, carbon farming study. We have a mover.
May I move it? Balance five thousand dollars towards the study with the funding to be allocated to a new account number for advocacy within materials and service under the elected members and governance functions, function, with a... commensurate reduction in materials and services within that function. I think I got that right.
Do we have a seconder, councillor Guthrie? Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it for or against? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Nine zero. Any further business councillors? Okay, I'll close the meeting at six forty two PM and thank you for your attendance.